Start our meeting, I'm going to invite Lance Gary, the Associate Pastor of First Baptist Church here in Weatherford, to come forward and lead us in the invocation. Thank you, sir, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, let's pray. Our Father, we want to come to you tonight, the day after the Veterans Day, to thank you for the veterans that have served this country and served each one of us, to help to protect and serve, and for those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Lord, we thank you for their service. Lord, we also want to pray tonight for the city leaders, the staff, the city council, as they consider the items, not only for tonight's meeting, but also for the other decisions that need to be made through the course of their service on this, here at the staff, for the council and their considerations, as they look forward to the future, the direction of the city. We thank you, Lord, for this night, and this time together, in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it, sir. It is 6:30, at this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present, all council members are here this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Our Mayor Pro Tem, Heidi Wilder, is going to lead us this evening.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mayor Pro Tem, item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Sharon Hayes.
Yes, sir, we have several things tonight to kind of brief you on. First thing has already happened, but we had a mayor's, Parker County Mayor's food drive that ended October 31st, and all of city employees were challenged to bring food, and that was to go to Center Hope. So, city employees raised over 2,000 pounds of food for the center. We haven't heard the results of it yet, but anyway, very proud of all the employees and all the giving that we did. A few events that are coming up, this Friday night, we have light up the night, and that is where the lights around the downtown area will be turned on. There's a lot of other activities going on, I know that Weatherford College Band, I think, will be there, and some other merchants and things participating, that information's on our website. On November 16th and 17th, is a 4th Annual Speakeasy Stroll. On November 30th, the county will do the tree lighting on the northeast, northwest corner of the square. On Saturday, December 7th, we have Christmas on the square in the downtown area. December 13th will be Holiday in the Park at Heritage Park, and then December 14th would be the 38th Annual Historic Turb Home. So, there's a lot of activities going on the next six weeks, so enjoy, take advantage of them and enjoy those.
Right, thank you, as usual, lots of great things going on in Weatherford, Texas. Any other items of community interest, council, staff? All right, move on to item five on the agenda, we're going to do these out of order, presentations and proclamations. Five A is to recognize the Weatherford Christian School Varsity Boys Cross Country Team for winning the state title for the third consecutive year. Five B is to recognize WSD 3rd Grade Teacher Karen Sams, who is the Teacher of the Year for the state of Texas. And then third item, five C is presentation of the employee highlight videos. Sharon Hayes and Bill Kef, we do five C first?
Certainly.
Okay, great. Highlight videos, it's like ESPN stuff? Or what are we doing here?
Well, I have one of the celebrities here from the videos, Mr. Austin Nichols.
We'll be doing autographs afterwards, left outside the left door, okay. Biggest celebrities, Chief Arnold.
He also has something too.
So, tonight, Blake Rexrode, Director of Communications and Marketing, tonight, usually when I come up here before you, it means we've wrapped up another exciting project, and we've done just that. Now, I'm all about giving credit where credit is due, and Nicole Wright, who works in our department, really led this project, she leads all of our video projects. So, I'm going to show you the first two videos that we've wrapped up with Neon Cloud regarding employee highlight videos, so I'll show those, and then Chief Arnold will show his police department videos as well.
Sounds great.
If my grandfather, grandfathers, if my grandmothers were asked what it is I do for this city, they'd probably say I fix computers, because basically I am their tech support, you know, will work for food. And if you make a good pecan pie, I could probably be for hire. The job description is very black and white and very boring, it's a project manager, but getting to interact with people on a day-to-day basis, what they do, how it affects them personally or their department personally, that's what project management is, it's managing people, it's managing change in the organization. The people are what make my job fun, that's what I love most about being a project manager. One of the coolest projects I've worked on was the My Weatherford app. It started as just a 3-on-1 application, so it gave the citizens an opportunity to submit service requests via the app directly to certain departments, so for example, whether it's a pothole, a damaged park equipment, a co-compliance issue. This is so boring, this is like boring, it's hard for me to break it down and make it interesting, you know, because it's not very interesting what I do. Citizens are able to use their smartphone, capture their information, and submit that directly to the respective department. So, what the application allows us to do is unite both the citizen and the city under one purpose, one goal, and that's to build a strong community.
So, now he's a celebrity.
Round of applause for Austin Nichols, right?
Yeah, good job. So, that was a really, Austin did a fantastic job, he was very patient with us as we filmed this, and the whole intent of these videos is to really show you the human side of who we are as an organization, and I hope everyone in attendance tonight really enjoyed that. So, we have another one that we're going to show, Mr. Cameron Hill, he works over in utilities, and so this is a quick video about his daily routine and a little bit about him personally.
We filming right now, we're still going, we're rocking and rolling?
If you're happy.
My chemistry teacher or any of them knew that I was actually using chemistry every day for my job, they would be floored. It would probably come as the greatest shock to them, more than my graduation. That's a tough question, okay, an average day for me is testing. I have multiple tubes of tests, like I'll run 6,000 tests a year, 7,000 tests a year, something along those lines. So, knowing that the numbers for the pH, for the monochloramines, the chloramines, you have to know all these numbers, you have to make sure these numbers are right. We have a small gap that we are in all the time. So, it's a standard that we hold ourselves to, that's not required by anybody but the city of Weatherford. And knowing that the team I have around me is as good as they are, that we enjoy what we do and what we pump out, it's one of the most enjoyable, if not the most enjoyable thing of my job, that brings me a lot of pride, I enjoy knowing that I provide that for the citizens of Weatherford. We have other projects coming, more towers that are going to be coming to provide more water to more citizens, to branch out, to reach, and to help as many people as we can. We're going to make this city, it was already great, and I know people say, well, you can't improve on great, but you can always improve on greatness, and I believe that that's what we're doing. I believe that we are actually moving forward and making it the best city that we can possibly make it, and we're all rowing in the same direction, we all have that exact same mindset, and we're going to achieve our goal. It's not if, but when we get there.
So, Cameron had another celebrity engagement tonight, so he couldn't be here, but I'll let him know that it was viewed tonight, the video.
It was great.
Yeah, he did a really good job. He actually, about him, he does a podcast outside of work too, so he's very multifaceted in his skill set, so he's an awesome individual, and I'm proud to be able to work with him each day here at the city, I know Sharon is as well, so. So, those are two of the videos, we have two more videos that we'll be showing in the near future, and then Chief Arnold has a video that he would like to show, I think he has like seven or eight videos downloaded in the pipeline.
Not tonight, though.
Yeah, not tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, pardon me, I am getting over a little bit of a cold, but with Blake's original work with Neon Cloud, that's how we got introduced to the company, and what started out for us as really a request for recruiting videos really turned into much more than that, and it really was through our partnership with marketing and communications, as well as Neon Cloud, to kind of find out what's so great about not only our department, but about working and living in this city. And so, we came up with 10 videos, they're all only about 20 to 25 seconds long, which is about most people's attention span these days when you're on social media, and that's what they're kind of geared for. But what they've really turned into is much more than recruiting, but really, an internal pride, an external pride, not only in our organization, but in the city of Weatherford and in the entire community, and that's really what we want to highlight. You won't hear a lot of voiceovers or see a lot of text on our videos, and that's by design, because what we want people to see is when they watch these videos, we want them to take out what's meaningful for them in these videos. And so, we did 10 videos total, we're just going to show our first one tonight, and then we may show a couple as we go from here on out, but really, they're designed for you to just take what you want out of it, and we have a recruiting kind of little link at the end, but they're designed for our own internal employees to take pride in their work every day, as well as our community and all the things that they give to us, and so, we really like showing that off and appreciate what Blake and his team have done with us as well, so.
So, those are the three videos that we wanted to show you all tonight, like Chief said, he has not, he always has to outdo us, so he's got nine more videos, I joke, it'll be great. We have two more that will show at upcoming meetings, so if y'all have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
Arnold, that was excellent.
Yeah, it was great.
Very, very easy department to be prideful in, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, will you join me down at the front for the recognition, first, of the Weatherford Christian School Varsity Boys Cross Country Team, and then Karen Sams? All right, Troy, did I hit the right button?
Yes, sir.
Six or seven meeting, I finally don't mess it up, right? Let's see here, gentlemen, let me get my cheat sheet. Come on, well, first of all, I want you to face the audience, not me, come on up here. All right, everybody loosen up here, let's have some fun, you come over here, come on over here, y'all look nice, all dressed up, looking good, all right, but I want to be able to see the crowd too, so y'all spread out a little bit, all right. Y'all don't sit and get livened up a little bit, we're going to go out and run a few miles, so let's get going here. Hey, I introduce to you the three-time state champion, Weatherford Christian School Cross Country Team, how about a round of applause? Their coach, Amy Butler, is here, Coach, come on up, please, how about a round of applause for her? So, I understand we may be missing a person or two, and out there was a basketball game, but as I said, the Weatherford Christian School Cross Country Team is a three-time state championship cross-country team. Couple of these boys are raising money as a community service project for St. Jude's, they're also running in a half marathon. Now, what's interesting, other than your three-time state champions, is that there's two sets of twins on this team, I find that interesting, I thought one of them, you look for me, or I'll meet you somewhere, and he goes, my twin brother's sitting in a row, and you just shook his hand, so. Anyway, we are proud of you, championships help us build a strong community, and we are very, very proud of y'all, we recognized your baseball team recently for their state championship, but we thank you for what you do, and I want a commitment from each of you that we'll see you right here, same place, same time with number four, can y'all commit to that? All right, y'all scoot in, I want everybody to smile, look sharp, we're going to do pictures for your parents or loved ones, come on, council, y'all get up here. All right. Threaten them. All right, y'all stay where you are, mom and dad, parents, y'all come on up, we'll stay here as long as you want. On three, everybody say, "I love you," one, two, three, there you go. All right, gentlemen, thank y'all very much, look forward to seeing you next year, thank you so much. Karen Sams, I hope you're here, I saw you, come on up, and her husband Eric is here, Eric, come on up with her, how are you doing? Congratulations, good to see you, been seeing you, how are you, sir? It's always a pleasure. Karen, we've been seeing you all over the place, you've been over social media, all over papers, not just in Weatherford, Texas, but other places, you can see, front page of the Weatherford Democrat, Karen Sams is the Teacher of the Year that's recognized by the TASSA, Texas Association of School Administrators, she was the Teacher of the Year in Weatherford, Texas, and she went through several other stages of competition on the statewide level, and she was chosen as the very best teacher in the state of Texas for this year, Karen Sams. Now, during her 15-year career in education, she's taught the first through third grades, as well as K through 5 music, so you're multi-talented, you want to do a little song now or something?
No.
Next time, okay. She's passionate about public education clearly, and has committed her entire career to helping students in Title I schools. Karen Sams currently teaches 3rd grade at David Crockett Elementary in Weatherford ISD, her principal's here today also, where she serves on the Campus Improvement Team and the Restorative Practices Campus Behavior Team. People like Karen Sams, people like the teachers in WISD and all of our educational entities in Weatherford, they are helping us build a strong community, thank you for being the best in Texas, we appreciate it so much. All right, we're going to do one more, y'all come back up with cameras, we're going to hold up a number one for Karen Sams, come on. Get your number one up. Thank you for being here, congratulations, you're a blessing to us, thank you. Eric, good to see you, sir, thank you so much. All righty, thank you for everybody that was here for that, we know how to clear a room, don't we? Let's see here, item six on the agenda is approval of a minutes, Mr. Zellers, do we have to hear these individually, or can I hear these as a group?
You can hear them as a group.
All right, I love that answer. Items 6A through 6E are listed individually, we can't hear these individually or separately if somebody has a request to pull them out? If none, we entertain a motion for the package at this time?
I move to accept all the minutes.
Motion by Curtis Tucker for approval as a whole, there's a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilder, any discussion before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote right now on items 6A through 6E, please indicate yea or nay on your touchscreens. Minutes pass unanimously, all of them. Item seven on the agenda is consent agenda items, we have item 7A, B, C, and D, we can hear these as a package, or is there anything anybody would like to pull out individually for discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion at this time, motion on the floor by Jeff Robinson for approval of the package, second by Councilman Cleveland, thank you both for that, is there any discussion before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on consent agenda items. Please indicate yea or nay at this time. They pass unanimously. Item eight on the agenda, public hearings, hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance O 2019-53 for zoning district change from AG Agricultural to C1 Commercial at 3111, West Interstate Highway 20, being a total of 2.454 acres in the city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2019-0020. Good evening.
Mayor and council, you have in your packet the complete staff report, and of course, this is a hearing, but to give you a little bit of background, this did go before the Planning Commission, at their October 23rd, where it was voted unanimously with all six planning commissioners present unanimously to rezone this property from AG Agriculture to C1 Commercial. This property was annexed in 2016, hadn't yet zoned itself, and this also matches what's in the general plan and the other plans that are adopted by the city. The applicant is here, if you have any questions for them, this time, we can open it up for hearings.
Council, we do have to have a public hearing, are there any questions for Mr. Kettner before we open our public hearing? Hearing none, we'll open up a public hearing at this time on item 8A, if there's anybody who would like to speak specifically on the item, please come forward at this time. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any discussion or any questions for staff before we consider action on the item? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion if it's your pleasure. Motion on the floor by Councilman Cleveland for approval, there's a second by Curtis Tucker, any discussion before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Identify yea or nay, please. Passes unanimously. Item nine on the agenda is regular agenda items, 9A is discuss, consider the approval of the Youth Association User Agreement, i.e. Weatherford Little League Association, Weatherford Soccer Association, and Weatherford Youth Association. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Jacob Kirkpatrick, Assistant Director of Parks, Recreation, and Special Events, we are here tonight to seek approval for our new Youth Association User Agreements. Just a little bit about how we got to this point, we don't currently have a user agreement for all of our associations right now, so we wanted to make that happen, so we created these new user agreements for all the associations to try to make them equal across the board. So, part of the way we've done that is we've met with each association over the last year and a half, we've created these user agreements that we'd like to move forward with tonight with your approval. I do have a little slide up here that'll show you the revenue from those agreements. The first, the one on the left top left is Little League, that is what they paid us this past spring with their current agreement, the numbers right below that is what they would have paid with their new agreement. So, you can see that they'll save around $3,000 each season with a new agreement for the Weatherford Little League. The lighting fees are the same, that won't change on theirs, but you can see that there. The Weatherford Youth Association has never paid a user fee before, they do not play games on our facilities, they just practice, so they just have that $5 participant fee, so you can see what their fee would be, would have been during this fall season. The Weatherford Soccer Association, they have never had a user fee as well, due to their large number, they have requested to do a three-year gradual scale to get up to their fees, so you can see that broken down there, year one, year two, and year three for their fees. They do play games on our facilities, as you can see that up there. But lastly, I want to say is that we do have some representatives here tonight from the association, so we appreciate them showing up with their support, but I'll load up to the floor after any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Comments, I know it's been a long time you guys have been working on this, and I just say thank you guys for bringing in the community, checking and seeing what their needs were, and having that open dialogue over the last year and a half, and I know it's appreciated.
Well, we appreciate the support, so it's been, it's been fun.
All righty, thanks for the comments, Mr. Cleveland, if there are no other comments, we'll call for a motion at this time, if it's the pleasure of council. Motion for approval by Councilman Cleveland, and there's a second by Curtis Tucker, any discussion before we call for a vote on 9A? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. 9A passes unanimously. Item 10, future agenda items, Sharon Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Staff? Why is it quiet tonight? Item 11 on the agenda is executive session items, 11A, is pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code VTCS Open Meetings Law, in accordance with the authority contained in Number 1, Section 551074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, special judge of the Weatherford Municipal Court, and Number 2, Section 551074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee city manager. Item 3 is Section 551072, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, .0.454 acres of land located in the TNP Railroad Company Survey, Number 141, Abstract 1447, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, and I want to clarify for the record, that's .454 acres. Council will dismiss to executive session at 6:53 PM, we'll meet in the East Conference Room. Thank you for your patience. Item 12 on the agenda is action on executive session items, I'm going to read all these and then ask that we take these in a specific order, council, if you can please be patient with me. 12A to take action if necessary pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code VTCS Open Meetings Law, in accordance with the authority contained in Number 1, Section 551074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, special judge of the Weatherford Municipal Court, and Number 2, Section 551074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee city manager. Item 3, which we'll hear first, Section 551072, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, .454 acres of land located in the TNP Railroad Company Survey, Number 141, Abstract 1447, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas. Council, do you choose to take any action on Item 3 under action on executive session items?
No.
Hearing no action, council, do you choose to take any action on Item 1 under Number 12, action on executive session items related to the special judge of the Weatherford Municipal Court?
I move that we approve the renewal of the contract for the special municipal court judge.
A motion on the floor by Jeff Robinson, is there a second? Second by Councilman Cleveland, is there any discussion under Item 1, under Number 12, action on executive session items before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on Item 1 at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Passes unanimously. Council, Item 2, Section 551074, personnel matters related to the city manager, do you desire to take action on this item tonight?
Yes, sir, I move that we approve an agreement to employ James Hotop as the city manager for the city of Weatherford, and authorize the mayor to execute such an agreement on behalf of the city council to be effective December 14th, 2019.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tem for employment of James Hotop as the next city manager of the city of Weatherford, there's a second by Jeff Robinson, is there any discussion on the item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Please indicate yea or nay on your touchscreens, that passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to represent, introduce, Mr. James Hotop will be our new city manager effective December the 14th of 2019. You've got about 28 minutes, you want to share a few words?
Do things briefly, first of all, I just want to let you know how fortunate it was to be able to work with Sharon Hayes over the past 13 years. Sharon and I began in utilities together and have been fortunate enough to work in the city manager's office with her, and I can honestly say that everything I've learned about local government has been from her, so it's been a very good experience. Weatherford is the economic engine of Parker County, we're the public safety leader of Parker County, and we're the quality of life leader of Parker County. We're constantly striving to partner with our businesses and residents to build a strong community. We've got several exciting capital projects that we're beginning to undertake, we're going to build a state-of-the-art public safety center that's unlike anything that's ever been built in this county. We're starting an exciting downtown redevelopment project.
We're starting an exciting downtown, uh, redevelopment project, which is really gonna redefine our downtown and we really started a exceptional partnership with Weatherford College in which we're expanding the animal shelter and creating a new learning environment there. We've strengthened and expanded our local, our relationships with, uh, other government organizations like Parker County, Weatherford College, WISD, and some of our neighboring cities like Hudson Oaks and Willow Park. We've got the finest staff of any local government across the state that's working to build a strong community and I'm excited to be a part of Weatherford, Texas. Thank you.
And we are so excited you're a part of it too, sir. Congratulations. Sharon Hayes, we could sit here all night and this is not the last time we'll sit by each other here, but we could sit here all night as a council, as a staff and as a community and never recognize everything that you've done and never thank you enough for what you've done for the city of Weatherford, not with the actions that we see today, but the things that have been put in place that'll change and that will help this community continue to thrive for decades and we'll be forever thankful for you. So thank you so much, too.
Thank you.
All right, item thirteen on the agenda is citizen comments on non-agenda items. We did have a blue card from, uh, Mr. Lance Gary. Lance, are you still here? We appreciate your patience. You're gonna have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I, I think I'm, uh, tagging.
If we could start off with your name and address, please, for the record.
Lance Gary, uh, one four two zero, East Bankhead Drive, Weatherford, Texas. I think I want to just tack on to what the theme has been tonight. I've been the operations manager at First Baptist Church here now for a couple of years and have had the opportunity to work with a number of different departments here in the city, uh, including permitting, inspections, electricity, water utilities, roads, transportation, per, uh, IT, city hall staff, many receptionists, uh, fire department, direct department, capital projects, city planning, and many others. Uh, at home, obviously trash, recycling, uh, brush removal. Every single person that I've run into, uh, dealt with on the city level has been more than friendly, uh, very accommodating and willing, willing to work within the confines of the ordinances, obviously. And, uh, it's been a great partnership that I've been able to deal with, uh, as a representative of First Baptist Church and just want to recognize and appreciate all that the city employees do in the job and their jobs throughout their city. So, thank you.
We thank you for being here tonight and thanks for providing our invocation too, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. There are no other cards, uh, for speaker, speakers for non-agenda items, anybody from the audience? Hearing none, we'll move to item fourteen, adjournment. Quick to the button is Jeff Robinson with a second by the mayor Pro Tim Hattie Wilder. We can talk about this all night or y'all ready to take a vote?
I'm ready.
We'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Council is unanimously adjourned at eight oh five PM. Thank you all for your service.